To start the meeting. Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Hunt, call the July 7th, 2022 City Council Planning, Development and Environment Committee to order. I am joined today with my fellow councilmembers, Councilmember Ray and Council President Walsh. And I wanted to announce as well that there are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There will be a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda item. We have one agenda item today, and that will be ID 1155, Title 18, Building and Design. We will start off with public comments. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually, although I will note there are no members of the public in the audience today. Those who are signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, press star three, and if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. And I will wait for a minute to see if anyone wishes to speak and raises their hand. And I'll check in with the city clerk. Clerk, has anyone signed up or indicated a desire to speak?
Councilmember Hunt, Connie Marsh has indicated a desire to speak at public comment.
Okay. I have some additional guidelines then. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Connie?
Yep. Ms. Marsh, I've made you a panelist. You can now unmute, and you can turn on your video.
Yes. You were there. I was just waiting for directions. Anyway, Connie Marsh, so I'm going to just talk about one little clip of this in advance of the discussion that you're going to have. And that is something that I don't see translated through any of the matrices, and that is in the Urban Design Guidelines section. There is sort of a placeholder for what this whole section applies to. And so when there's a placeholder, my mind says it could be anything. And so I had a very hard time deciding whether I liked it or not, because my mind said, is this supposed to also be about single-family housing? And so if that placeholder was to say, "Single-family housing is included in these urban design guidelines," I'm adamantly opposed. So while you're listening, think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. City clerk, do we have anyone else who has indicated a desire to speak at this time?
Councilmember Hunt, I do not see any other virtual hands raised at this time.
Great. Thank you. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawat.gov. And now we will go to our first and only agenda item this evening, which is ID 1155, Title 18, Building and Design. And this will be presented by Director Dolly Waal, the Director of Community Planning and Development.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the community. I'll quickly walk through the presentation. This was in your packet. Some of it is a little bit repetitive. You know, we're repeating things that we've already given you, but sometimes community members join in in the middle of this conversation. So we've kept that same format for the presentation. But tonight, we're going to talk about building and design topics, and we're seeking input...
Sorry. Would it be possible to put it in the design or the full mode? Yeah, thank you.
Can you guys see it now? Okay, perfect.
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
So what we're trying to do today is to seek your input on the building and design regulations and to find out if there are any additional considerations for Planning and Policy Commission to study before they can finalize their recommendation to City There are three topics in this larger topic of building and design. So one is building design, the second is site and urban design, and then we have the neighborhood overlays. Three goals from the Goals and Outcomes chart that relate to this topic are Goal 8, Neighborhoods retain their character; Goal 9, sustainable development; Goal 13, modernize and streamline the code. Where we are in the process, we have finished Phase 1 and Phase 2, and Planning and Policy Commission has deliberated on this topic, and we're having this discussion draft for you all to discuss. Based on the feedback today, you know, we'll produce a combined draft, and that'll be back to the committee in November. What we've included in your packet, I think by this time everyone's familiar, but there's a summary of the proposed changes, how they align with the Golden Outcomes update, links to all the planning and policy commissions, and which include all the responses to public comments, minutes of these meetings, that we've created a document called Public Feedback Loop Matrix, and also the draft code. These three topics, we'll tackle them one at a time. So the first one, building design. What this really regulates is the exterior of the building should look like, articulation and modulation, any rooftop activities, weather protection, transparency along the street front. And what we've, some of the major changes, we've revised the step backs, which is different than the setback, and there was a little bit of confusion about the terminology, but it's sort of this tiered effect in the building massing. It used to be that we required it above the third floor, and what we heard from community members and also with the TOD project, that it's, we need some flexibility in where the step back occurs. So with the proposed draft, we're saying that it can occur after the first or second floor, but no higher than sixth floor. But you can choose where you're going to step it back. And for the most part, you know, four, five over two buildings, which generally is two floors of concrete and wood frame construction, it usually will occur at the second floor. But you will have the opportunity to do it within that range. We had a lot of deviations sprinkled throughout the code. Some of them were pretty broad and vague and hard to administer. So we've limited some of those. However, the window transparency deviations are still in the code, and these were the ones that most people asked for, the deviation. And it's really for commercial buildings where you have some storage needs, or for multifamily that abuts the sidewalk. There's some privacy concerns and such. But what we're going to do is go back and add some more clear guidance criteria for approval of this deviation, which is still missing from the draft. But in other words, we've organized and reformatted, revised the text to be more clear and predictable than, and removed the arbitrary and vague language. We used to have requirements for skybridge generally over the street standards. Those are going to move to the street standard section. In the Sustainable and Energy Code, there was some confusion, and I'll try my best to sort this out. But we are going to have further discussion with Planning and Policy Commission on this. While we were in the middle of these updates, the state law was changed. So building code, under the state building code, we have to adopt it by July of 2023. There is some guidance on sustainable buildings, and it's very specific and detailed. So that's going to occur in the building code. We didn't want to duplicate or add, you know, confusion by adding something in the Title 18. So we, for the purposes of the hearing, took that section out. We will go back to PPC to discuss if there needs to be a stopgap measure for larger buildings, that we would require some sort of a LEED certification or Built Green certification for larger subdivisions, because Built Green, my understanding, is for residential, and LEED would apply for the other ones. There was some discussion about ecological score with the landscaping chapter. We're looking at that as well. So more information and discussion with PPC will occur on this. However, a more thoughtful discussion about how to build sustainable buildings is a much lengthier and a very thoughtful discussion is needed, because we could go the certification route. I don't think the city should have its own certification process, because it'll be a huge undertaking, and with, you know, unintended outcomes could come out of that. So that currently is on the whiteboard, but we can talk more about it at the end. Site and urban design is the second topic. So this one really regulates the arrangement, appearance, and relationship of the development as it relates to the public realm, along the public street, next to your neighboring properties and such, and even critical areas. Entryway design, driveway and parking location, retaining wall heights, all fall under this topic. And some of the major changes here, you know, we didn't have solid waste collection standards, and those were always the last thing to come on the property and the first thing for anyone to see. So we've added some standards here, primarily to add some more awareness, so it's not an afterthought that that's taken into consideration as the site is being designed, but also to ensure better enforceability. Again, deviations, which were pretty broad and vague, have been limited. We did leave the deviation for view corridors in the draft. The language for the view corridor is still pretty broad. It's more policy language than it is regulatory language, and these are hard to enforce. So we, you know, this is, we've added this item to the whiteboard. There is some language in the Central Isiqua Plan that exists. I think we could probably keep it, keep some of that, fine-tune some of the language in the interim. But this is, it's difficult to regulate and needs more thoughtful discussion. And the current draft language isn't where it needs to be in this, at this stage. Again, we've merged some sections, removed redundancy, provided some clarity. We've also removed a universal design standard requirement, because it duplicates what's already required in the building code, and sometimes there are conflicts. We've taken the through-block passage regulations to the street standards, and those will occur, discussion with PPC will occur in the coming months. There's a beep. I want to make sure is... So a pause for a minute until we figure out the beep. Oh, it's in the hallway? Yeah, well, it stopped.
Oh.
So we'll continue. And so that's sort of the main highlights of the site and urban design. I think there was a question about whether it applies to single-family. No, it does not. And the neighborhood overlays section, it contains specific regulations for specific areas of our city. And I have a map that I include in the presentation. So Old Town, Central Business District, and multifamily has its own overlay standards. Single-family duplex, the city did a lot of work. Those are being carried forward. Central Isiqua, Highlands, Talis, so all of those are separate neighborhood overlays. But instead of going to five different documents, it'll be merged into one document. They're organized by neighborhood. We've added some text to add clarity and be more specific than more broad and vague language. We've adopted the single-family duplex materials and color standards for Central Business District and multifamily. So there's a little bit of expansion, but in the interest of not having very unique things, there's a little bit of broadening going on with this update. For Central Isiqua, design bonus, density bonus program, you know, we've called it development bonus, but it's essentially the same. Standards for traditional Isiqua and urban core combined, where they were quite similar but slightly different.
Can I, can I ask a question on the last slide?
Sure.
Thanks. So when you say adopted the material and color standards for CBD and multifamily in Old Town, I know, I guess my question is, what are they replacing, and would this be more prescriptive than what it's replacing?
It is. So I think that a lot of work occurred with the single-family duplex design standards with the community outreach and all that. There was a slight difference between that and the CBD and the multifamily, general multifamily standard. So I think those got carried forward. Valerie, are you on the call? Do you want to give a specific example?
Yes, I'm on the call. Can you repeat the question, please?
So for the Old Town, you know, single-family duplex materials and color standard that we applied to CBD and multifamily. So the question is, did we make it more prescriptive?
No, they're essentially the same. So no, they're not more prescriptive.
Okay, thank you.
So here's a little bit more detail about the, you know, PPC had a good discussion on multifamily medium in Old Town. And there's more specific things about the windows and dormers in Old Town than citywide standards. The question we asked PPC was, do we want to make multifamily medium the same throughout the city? And because of all the public outreach that was done recently, these were left separate. So multifamily medium standards in Old Town are going to be more prescriptive and unique because of the most recent work that was done. You know, gabled roof form, more specific, you know, being more specific about projecting windows, those are some examples. The citywide multifamily medium, you know, standards were rooftops, solar panels, green roofs, minimum 412 roof pitch, front yards with decks and porches, windows, you know, replacement windows being, must be sensitive to the historic style of the building, more prominent entrances. For the materials and colors, I think we asked for, have a base, middle, and top. Those kind of things are applied citywide. Another topic, developer obligations, which is not in the draft right now. This is in the Central Isiqua Plan. There is one line that got carried forward, saying, you know, in the regulations, that developers had to, you know, comply with these developer obligations. We are going through these, you know, in a more regulatory detailed way to make them actual regulations than policy language. For example, one of the things to preserve jobs in Central Isiqua refers you to ITE manual, but it doesn't get into the methodology to be used, or how, you know, which use, if it's a vacant building, how do we determine the existing use, those kind of things. So we are going to add more specific language to not have to do code interpretations each time we get a project. So that's not in the draft, but will be included for PPC discussion in the coming future. I want to spend a little bit of time kind of going through what we heard through this public process. So step backs, the tiered effect language, there's some discussion about whether, when you step it back, should it be usable open space and terraces? I think the current language in the draft says, yes, they should all be terraces. So those, we're going to take a look at. I think we heard both sides, whether there are some challenges with ADA requirements and other things from one developer. If we mandate that the step back should all be usable terrace space, but we're going to do further research and understand that issue. The step back will remain, but whether that, all of it needs to be usable open space or not, we'll look into that. We also heard screening the top of any rooftop equipment is problematic, especially for ventilation and other things. So, which seems reasonable request, so we're going to take a look at that. Weather protection along alleys and facades that don't have pedestrian access. You know, there were comments that, why do we need weather protection when nobody's going to walk there? So again, more research where it can sometimes help break the facade. Maybe if there is weather protection, you would get some pedestrian access. However, if there's no door, it probably won't be for the building user. So more nuances to it, but we'll take a look at it. Transparency for multifamily uses along sidewalks. So if we, if our code requires the building to be right against the sidewalk, the current draft and the existing code has a 40% transparency requirement for multifamily above six feet from the sidewalk. And that can be challenging, according to some. So I think the height, the separation is meant for privacy needs. So we'll take a look, what's the common, you know, what's the desired outcome, and how best to provide some flexibility there if we can. The idea is not to have blank walls, but yet have some privacy addressed. Pedestrian connections to surrounding properties and through-block connections, these have been a little bit challenging, from what we heard from our tours and from others, that we do get these through-block connections, but it's hard for people to know whether this is public or private, and the design is in concern, but also what it connects to is a concern. So we're relooking at the whole approach to through-block connection, and we'll include it for PPC discussion in the future with the street standards. Number six, preserving views section. We got comments that it's still too, you know, broad and vague. It could be problematic. Who decides whether it blocks or preserves the view? What criteria are we going to use? If it should be only on the valley floor throughout the city? The current view protection is only applicable in the Central Isiqua Plan. However, there's been community desire in all of our comp plans and others to make it citywide. But again, it's one of those things that's hard to regulate unless you have specific regulations of what this means. We have added it to the whiteboard list to have a more thoughtful discussion about it. But we'll, we'll keep some of the language for Central Isiqua at least that exists, but try to make it more regulatory language and specific. The screening of rollout waste containers will clarify that, that, you know, if temporarily you're pulling it out, you have to take them back, but you don't have to screen them. Food waste requirements for multifamily was raised as an issue. Our code currently requires each floor to have food waste requirement, and the chutes have operation and sanitary issues. We'll see if, what the best industry standard is on how to, you know, have composting for multifamily in a more, less heavy on the operation side. So we'll look at that.
I'm sorry. Before you, before you go on, process question, there's a number of things on this list that I do think have a policy aspect to them, and would probably be of interest to council and to this committee. And I'm wondering when, and there are also a number of, like, to-do items on this list.
Sure.
And so I'm wondering when, or what's the plan for bringing that back to council and to this body?
Yeah, I think we can narrow down the, the policy questions that the committee wants to review today from this list of 17, and then we can figure out, you know, if we can, when we can bring it back with the next round, with some options for the committee, or if you want Planning and Policy Commission to weigh in on those policy options before we come back to the committee.
Okay, that sounds good. I think it's good for us to know that that's in our purview. Thank you.
So number nine, we heard that we needed some deviations for block circulation, access to step-back terraces, and view preservation. So definitely, we want to have predictable regulations, but also build in some flexibility that is based on criteria. These are the three topics that we heard definitely should be some flexibility built into the regulations. We have some language in the, in the current draft about sustainable site design that talks about how wind and topography should be incorporated in site design. I agree, it's pretty broad and vague. I think we need to relook at that and either have more specific guidance, or, you know, take it out. There are also zoning cap tables and neighborhood map for Isiqua Highlands and Talis in our current draft, in our existing regulations. When the replacement regulations were put in place, it was set up as zoning cap tables and map. Those will be included in the draft, and we're going to take that forward to PPC. This came as a comment from one of the PPC commissioners. We are trying to make it less, you know, the current tables include everything that's already developed and undeveloped. So we're trying to consolidate it so that we can separate the developed versus the undeveloped portions to make it more easy to understand what those mean. Some discretionary decisions are still too subjective, so we're going to relook at that. There was a concern about, we've changed the should to shall and must, and what does that mean? Have we made it more prescriptive? Really, the intent for all of this was to create more predictable regulations. And if, where there was should, we moved some of those into intent statements, and where there were broad statements, we tried to narrow it down to make it clear what those regulations were. But we are going to go back and, and take a look at where we moved the should and the shall, and present it with the next draft in an open, clear, transparent way, and easy to understand where that was changed. There is also this density bonus language that has a hard-wired dollar amount, which we're going to change to the fluid arch formula that is used to determine the current market value. We talked about the developer obligation section, so we're going to incorporate some regulations related to that. Then there was an ask to have, to define some of those terms used in these chapters, such as through-block connection, sustainable materials. So we will, you know, definitions are a chapter on its own, so we'll make sure some of these things are defined. And lastly, to address the climate action goals in building design. So we'll have a further discussion on that that I mentioned earlier. So that's pretty much the summary of the comments and how we're going to address it. Real quickly, the next steps, October consolidated draft, November, December, back to committee for review. Next topic that we plan on coming to you all in August is transfer of development rights, affordable housing, landmark, and archaeological resources, and parking. So I'll go back to this list to see if we can narrow down the policy things that we want to have a discussion about. So...
And can I ask a question on one of these? So on the zoning cap, I, I guess I don't understand how that would, this is in the land use code. So who and how, who would use this, and how would they use that information?
So when replacement regulations were put in place, you know, each parcel was assigned what the maximum development potential was for that. So so many square feet of commercial, so many square feet of residential, so many residential units. And it was done parcel by parcel basis. So for parcels that were already developed, or that had a tract, for instance, that was common open space, or an access tract, the zoning cap was assigned zero to those during the replacement regulations. So we're separating the ones that were zero and fully developed, kind of addressing them in the non-conforming section. Of, when redevelopment occurs on those, they would, they would be allowed to do the development what was permitted. However, the unbuilt that have specific numbers assigned to them, we're planning to carry that forward in the draft.
Okay. And is that typical sort of best practice to, to have that and to use it in that way? Just not, sure, I guess I'm not sure why that one is on this list, basically. So what's the concern about it, and what's the...
Yeah. So, you know, that's how replacement regulations are currently set up.
Okay.
So... So, we're taking them forward in that way.
Okay. All right, so I think, are you concluded with your presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, thank you. And I think now we can go into council questions. I know I have some. Want to open the floor to my colleagues? Okay. So, I have a number of questions. One is, and this is one that I had emailed, but I think it's important to talk about because it affects the application of the building code. Can you speak to the plan as far as the treasures list and how that would be handled?
Sure. So, in the land use element in the comprehensive plan, we have a council adopted Essequa treasures list. In that are included some developments, some non-development type of things. But for the ones that are actual buildings, we plan on taking those items from that list and including them in the process and procedures section to state that those particular projects aren't subject to the five architectural styles that are in the architectural style manual. So, they should be able to do small expansions and additions without having to show compliance with how they meet these five architectural style standards. So, that's a, yeah, at what threshold? You know, if they were to completely redevelop and, you know, start over, then yes. But if for additions and if they're keeping their property as is, so those are some of the details in the language that we're working through. But it'll be in the process and procedures section where we have these thresholds of what has to comply with the architectural style standards.
Okay, thank you for that. And I know you're working with the treasures, the owners of the treasure property on what that could look like. Is that right?
Yes, we'll reach out to them. We have been working with, and that's where some of these comments have come in, hearing from the community members that some of these standards don't really make a whole lot of, you know, the outcome isn't any different, but it's a long, lengthy process to show how they comply with these standards. But in the end, it's sort of the same design. But it's the narratives that they have to give to the city to show compliance and all that. So, yes, we are going to streamline all of that.
Okay, right. That's great, thank you. And then would that streamlined, because that's part of rules and procedure, would that come back to this committee?
Yes, that's bucket six, absolutely.
Okay. All right, I know I did ask this when you had the slides up about the Old Town standards, but I'm still wondering if, what they're replacing, the single family duplex and multifamily. Is it really the same like color palette and really the same level of prescription? Just that it was exactly the same in two places?
Yeah, so, Old Town duplex.
Valerie has...
Okay, Valerie.
Sorry. Yes, they're very similar. So, both have, one kind of has like a color wheel and the other one kind of has pink chips. And so, basically, what we're trying to do is just consolidate the two because they're basically having the same thing. So, we're not making anything more prescriptive. We're actually just trying to remove redundancies.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. Okay, last big question right now is it seemed that there was, one of our goals in the goals and outcome chart was about the climate goals, goal nine. And I didn't see a lot of updates in this section that are on there. I know there was some mention of that in the comments list as well. So, I'm wondering if you could talk through what changes were made to address that goal nine? And how you think there could be opportunities to better address that goal nine?
Yeah, so, for the building design, you know, we had some discussions early on with the planning and policy commission during the gaps analysis phase of how best to address this goal. And at the time, we had presented perhaps, you know, what we heard was we need to create, it shouldn't be an incentive based approach. It isn't, because nobody takes up the city on the incentives. And it just doesn't, you know, that was sort of the resonant message that we heard. So, without the incentive based approach, if we are going to require things, so all the homes and highlands and talis were required to have Built Green certification, for instance. So, it was a third party certification. Before we gave the occupancy of the building, they had to show that they were certified as a Built Green, you know, certification. So, that was one approach that we could just require everyone to be certified. But we also heard was it's expensive to get certification. And, you know, things have evolved. People have figured out how to do sustainable buildings without actually getting LEED certified and Built Green certified. So, and then in the interim, we have the state law that got passed with the energy code updates that gets into more specifics about what point system to use, what number to use, how to reduce your energy costs, how to get some electric outlets for future retrofitting of the, you know, so it gets very ingrained kind of things in the building code. So, it's true, we haven't fully nailed the sustainability for building design yet. But the options at this time that we're exploring are, if we want to have a thoughtful discussion on sustainable building design, that isn't everyone is certified and gets this third party certification. We don't think a city certification program is the right approach to go. Nobody's done it. It's going to be too labor intensive and we don't know the outcome. It's not, it could be an experiment that will need some technical expertise if you want to go down that approach. But our recommendation is not to have a city certification. Or we do a stopgap measure, get some of the larger buildings to get LEED certification and Built Green certification. In the meantime, we figure out the building code, what it means. So, the climate action goals, we have been able to, you know, as you see in the ICAP, in the landscaping chapter, in the tree preservation, in the, so we've been able to do it in those chapters. But for the building design itself, there are some options. We're going to talk to PPC. We are hoping we can have that discussion with them in July or, you know, first part of August and lay out some options for them to consider and make the recommendation to you all.
Okay. Thank you. My fellow councilmembers have questions? All right, Councilmember Ray.
Thanks, just a couple of interesting things. So, I was really intrigued with your discussion of the step backs and redoing those. I was kind of curious what the rationale for that was. And particularly if we could have higher step backs, would that create this canyon effect? If we have, you know, two tall buildings across the street from each other with very high step backs?
Yeah, so the current requirement is to have a higher step back. We're just letting folks do it at a lower level.
I thought that the current was three stories and you're now going to allow up to six. Did I mishear that? I must have misheard that.
Yeah, let me pull it up real quick.
And we can't see, we don't see the screen anymore.
Okay, I'll share my screen real quick.
I could quickly jump in and just read the requirement. So, in the new code, it's stating that for buildings taller than five floors, the step back shall begin at the sixth floor, but may begin as low as the third floor. So, it's kind of putting some, you know, at this requirement, you know, this is your max, but you can go as low as this. So, going forward, we're going to try to clear up that language because we could tell that it's a little confusing.
Great, and so buildings less than six stories, it's what? Is it the second story, second, third floor?
Yeah, at a minimum, the first two floors.
Okay, but I could build a 10-story building and I would not have to step back until six?
Yes, you have to step back before your sixth floor or at your sixth floor. You can go lower, but you're right.
That just seems high to me. I mean, I'm not expecting any 10-story buildings here, but that's just a lot of wall. And particularly if you have like two of them across the street from each other. So, something to consider.
Yeah, so that's existing. So, here's a picture of what the current code says. If taller than five floors, step back floors above the fifth floor, minimum five feet, maximum 20 feet. So, I think part of it was to create a, it's hard to kind of figure out. I think the objective is to reduce the perceived building size and avoid the, so instead of having the whole thing be one floor, it was a step back at the top. But also probably to create a top of the building. And then it's in two different locations, that's one place. And then we have this objective along the natural context zones. So, if you're fronting a wetland or a, you know, to provide visual relief between natural and built environments. In that case, we said, the existing code says, provide a minimum step back of 10 feet and a maximum of 20 feet for all floors above the fourth floor that face the natural area. So, slightly different, five versus four, natural versus breaking up the, you know, facade.
Yeah, let me ask the question a little differently. What were you trying to accomplish with this? What are we trying to accomplish with the step backs?
Yeah, so what we tried to fix is what we heard was the step back at the upper floor from a building construction standpoint is problematic. In most of the development that you're seeing around with the two stories of concrete and five stories of wood frame, where the materials change, it makes more sense to have the step back. But these regulations prevented people to have a lower step back. So, we're allowing people to step it back at a lower floor. But I think what I hear you say is that up to six is, you know, we should just require it at a lower.
You know, from where I sit, lots of tall buildings creates a canyon and it's not my favorite and most inviting effect. So, you know, that's one person's opinion of step backs. So, for me, yeah, I would like to see lower step backs.
City deputy administrator had a comment, I think.
I did, but I think Minnie has answered everything, so thank you.
Yeah, no, I think this is great. So, consider that. And then the other, I have a couple others. One is, love the idea of the whiteboard, AKA parking lot, I assume. It's where we're parking things. Is there a list of that we could see at some point? It'd be fun to see what we're still working on in the parking lot or what's on the whiteboard. Never mind.
Yeah, it's a work in progress. So, we've given you at this stage of our, you know, update, we have the items that we've shared with you. It's evolving and we plan to have, you know, after planning and policy commission finishes their discussion with the six larger groups, we will discuss this whitelist to make sure that we didn't miss anything that PPC had in mind or if they felt something needed to come off of the list.
All right, one final question. Has the state building code revisions that you referenced, have they been finalized yet and just not implemented?
That's my understanding. So, those got adopted at the state level and the cities have till July of 2023 to adopt them.
Have we looked at them?
Yes.
Okay, and do they help with some of the things we've talked about, what we have to climate action goals?
They do. You know, the building code has become pretty complex. And let me kind of pull this up and share a few snippets from it with you all of what we learned with this update. Had it open here. Sorry. So, things like, you know, reduces emission by requiring heat pump, water heating in Lou, so that's in there. We have higher performance buildings by increasing the number of efficiency credits. And the way these are calculated is pretty complex and so architects are having to do this. So, it used to be six, they've gone it up to seven. Solar readiness requirement for multifamily buildings is part of this update. On-site renewable energy generation for commercial buildings over 10,000 square feet at 0.5 watt per square foot, so there's that. Luminaire level lighting controls or enhanced digital lighting control for open offices greater than 5,000. So, there's a lot in there, those are just some highlights. And then demolition waste materials, you've got to reuse them. So, all of those are part of this state update.
Great, thank you.
Council President Walsh?
Thank you. Okay, that's fine. Okay, so I have questions in random places, so I'll just go through some of them. How does somebody know that they need to go to the overlay section?
You know, we'll probably have a roadmap sort of things and references. So, if you are here, you know, we were thinking of even development agreement areas. So, that'll be the usability portion with the whole consolidated section of how does someone kind of know from here to here to here that this also applies to them? It'll be cross-referenced in some other section. So, if they're looking at their heightened, you know, the form and intensity standards, we will direct them. If you are in here, you also need to go here or maybe even a design standard. So, we'll figure that out.
Okay, I really like that idea of a roadmap and that concept of helping someone understand which sections they need to go to. Ultimately, I think that's better for staff because then if somebody gets all of the things right before they come to you, you don't have to go through multiple versions of a permit review. Okay, are there any building or site design requirements for wildfire? Or does that go into another area?
Yeah, we haven't had anything in the site design, any criteria that I read through in our draft. We did talk a little bit about in the landscaping chapter and I think one of the comments from you all were, why don't we make that sort of a requirement rather than, so we will, you know, it'll probably reside in the landscape chapter perhaps?
But what about like building materials and things like, I know parts of the Highlands require non-wood shingle roofs and things like that. Is there, does that come into building code rather than site design?
Yeah, that is also state adopted code and that's also in effect. That's been adopted and that does talk about, there is a map that was released by state and that doesn't make any sense for our city. And we're looking at that, talking to the folks that created the map and commenting on it to designate the areas that are wildfire, you know. It goes through the middle of South Cove and half of it is and half of it isn't. So, some of those things are being worked out, but that, yes, you're absolutely right. Requirement for a non, you know, the roof materials is in there. That's part of the building code.
Okay. Trying to decide if these are comments or questions. I'll go with one more question. The multifamily food waste, I thought was a really interesting set of conversations between what was going on. So, I'm wondering at what size of apartment does that apply? Was that multifamily mid-rise? And then if that's the case, what about low-rise apartments? Or is there any requirement that a building provide, that a building be built in a way to house something if it's a lower-rise apartment?
Good question. You know, I think our regulations don't talk about a sliding, like a smaller size is exempt. I think it just says every floor has to have, is that correct, Valerie? I don't remember reading.
Because I'm thinking there are a lot of... Because I'm thinking there are a lot of apartments where you've just got two on top of each other with their own entrances and two on top of each other where it just wouldn't make sense to say have to have something on every floor, but you still want something in the built design that accommodates for it in the way. So.
Yeah, I, I think the, the waste collection from recology would probably distinguish whether they get a single-family rate or a multifamily rate. So a townhome, which is two-story, everyone probably just brings their containers out at the street in a more larger complex, three-story wood frame or something, you know, nobody's building those anymore. But existing apartment complexes like that where you have a container, whether people are coming in and dropping it up in the container versus throwing it down a chute. Good question. If, if, you know, we'll look at that to see if there's, you know, distinction between when that, that comes into play.
Yeah, because I know there's.
I just wanted.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. I just wanted to add that the chute isn't a requirement. It just says that if you do do it, then you should do these things. So, and right now it doesn't outline the regulations by use, it just does it by indoor or outdoor.
Okay, tell me more. I know I read over that section that said you could either do a chute or have a location on each of the floors that would then be serviced. But either way, one of the two of those is required, right?
Oh, yes. You have to have an outdoor location for the waste truck to pick up the, the waste. So you definitely need to have that. But the chute is, it's not required. It's just saying if you have the chute, then you need to design it for the three different streams.
Yeah, if you have it on each floor, then either someone has to carry that and take it down. And if you have a five-story building on a regular basis or have the chute system. So we'll, we'll look at what the best practice is and tweak the, the requirement accordingly.
Okay, I know this isn't comments time, but let me just put out there as far as what my expectation in reading over that and, you know, if I'm interpreting it wrong, then maybe that indicates there wasn't something there that I could understand, is that our intention was to have multifamily buildings have a requirement in their built system for handling food waste, recycling and trash, whether that be a chute or a space on each floor that then the management would have to bring down, not that individuals would have to bring down.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
I think, I think we just want to make composting easy and not someone to throw everything down in the trash. So how we achieve that objective with these regulations, you know, is, is the conversation we'll have with the property managers, with recology and, and see what, what makes more sense.
I think this is a really good example of one of those scenarios where we're coming into it with a good intent and we hear from building developers and landlords and say, okay, this might cause a problem. And instead of abandoning it, we create options. And so I'm encouraged by those as ideas and want to look at other ways that we can do that in this, throughout the code. So let me see if there are any other. Oh, I'm going to consider the rest of these comments. Actually, one question is, how do we, how are we planning to address kind of conversation about the future whiteboard list and the ICAP? Because I'm kind of sticking to code, Title 18 code, and then there's this other topic.
Yes. So I have a question, which maybe helps address this question. So we have in this ID, which, the title of which is, you know, Title 18 Buildings, we have the whiteboard table, which covers everything. And then we also have the ICAP table, which also covers all the different parts of Title 18. So one question I had is, I feel like these need to live somewhere else for people to be able to find them because they're not actually connected with this ID. And so that would be my first comment. And then this, then as far as, so does that, I guess the question is, do you have a plan for putting them somewhere else that people can get to them?
We, we can put them on the website. That's not an issue at all. We, you know, we'll put it with some caveat that this is a work in progress and it'll evolve kind of language. So we can put it on the website so that people can easily find it. We plan to take it with the PPC packets and call out these as a memo for the ICAP table. We'll have a memo. We'll lay out some options to do here. So that'll, that'll be another easy access for folks, but more thought given into options and what to do. And same thing with the whiteboard. It'll be part of the PPC packet in the future too. So, but in the interim, we, we're happy to put this on the website. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I think then for our discussion to answer your question, I think probably we can have a separate part of our discussion to, to address those since now is the time when we are presented with these materials. Okay, so do we have any additional questions at this point? Not seeing any. So I will then move to public comments and I will check in with the city clerk if there is anyone on the line and if so, if they have indicated a desire to speak on this topic.
Councilmember Hunt, Connie Marsh has indicated a desire to speak at public comment. Ms. Marsh, I'm making you a panelist. You should now be able to unmute and turn on your video.
Well, in theory. There we go.
We can hear you. Yes, and now we can see you.
Yeah, now you can see me and my storage room. I'm so. Aye, aye, aye. You know, I'm going to start with the whiteboard first because the whiteboard is super awkward as staff is pulling topics onto the whiteboard sort of without, without specific council approval that they're getting pulled. And I don't know if that's the correct process. Some of those things I think are integral in Title 18 update. And of course, I'm harping on the stream buffers and best management practices for stream buffers, which I've been asking for for now almost a year and have not, not, best available science, I'm sorry, have not seen any best available science on. So I don't understand how we can do a Title 18 update according to state law and not have best available science for stream buffers. And so that is probably not the only topic on that whiteboard that people or you all might think does not, should not be on the whiteboard. So I would like some sort of intentional conversation about that and then a vote that, that would show that council has responsibility for that being on the whiteboard. Okay, moving backward in time, and PPC talked about this several times. And that is the descriptions of the neighborhoods that we have. We have Old Town, that has its own sort of regulations. We have Isqwa Highlands and Talis. But many of the neighborhoods within those areas have their specific neighborhood identity. Yet I don't understand how we are use, going to be able to use this code to maintain that neighborhood character. Central Isqwa Plan, we went to the effort of creating these pictures of what those neighborhoods would build out to in the future. Yet there does not seem to be a connection with code that would make it so that, that, that implementing the code will get you the character that you are trying to create. And then there is the question of different neighborhoods who have particular characters, but they have not been, oh, written in stone yet. What do you do with those and how do you understand if you're implementing your code according to that character? So we use this as the theme, but I don't see that we are creating an implementable set of rules in order to, to meet that goal. And I, I, I guess I, I've never understood how that was going to work. So then the question of LEED and Built Green. Over time, we have used LEED and we have used Built Green and they clearly became not even code. Our codes were more strict than those levels of, of checklist that you use. So unless you went to LEED Silver, LEED Platinum, you just weren't keeping up with the requirements of our environmental world. So I, I don't understand how, how, how we're going to work with this over time. And so when you're having the conversation about what tools to use, I want to throw in that the tools are going to have to advance continually as we see more and more opportunities to do things better. They cannot be stagnant. And we have made that mistake in the past and we have had stagnant tools and it has not worked out well for us. And then we have had some brilliant moments like Z Home, but then Z Home never turned into anything and we never made it a reality for more than just Z Home. And, and most of our staff that actually has any history of all these things in town is gone. So I want to try to put a post in the ground to, to state this and hope that council supports that concept. And that, oh, wait, I want to agree that I actually like the, the step backs being lower than six stories. When I'm in Bellevue, the very most downtown areas have that tunnel feeling and they actually have wind problems every time you open a door. So the step back does seem to help with that channelization and the wind. So I would change it. Yeah, I'm done. That was my last thing. Though, though, did I, was it five minutes at the beginning? I didn't hear that.
I timed you. That was five minutes.
No, no, I didn't hear the rule five minutes. When you're the only one speaking, that seems like a horrible rule, by the way. Okay, I'm done. Bye.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have anyone else on the line indicating a desire to speak on this topic?
Yes, councilmember Hunt. Steve Boliger would like to speak.
Great.
Steve, I have made you a panelist. You should be able to unmute and turn on your video.
Can everyone hear me and see me?
We can hear you.
Oh, great. Well, a couple comments. I was intrigued by what Minnie had talked about in terms of the lack of sustainable incentives doing anything. Because I know other jurisdictions, especially Seattle that I'm familiar with, have, have been very successful in using incentives to encourage sustainable development. So I'm guessing that it might be what's being offered in terms of those incentives that's lacking. So I, I, I would hate to dismiss that as a tool to use. So I would like for folks to, to relook at that because I think we can make great progress in that direction. The other thing that was intriguing, that Minnie said there's no development going on in the three-story and I'm guessing three to four-story product, probably realm. And why is that? You know, because that is a lot of infill product that's on the edges probably of the central plan, but still isn't important. So again, I'm thinking that it has to do with our code and I've made comments about that in the past, but I continue, especially with her reflection on the fact that no development is really happening in that type of building product. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City clerk, is there anyone else indicating a desire to speak on this topic?
Councilmember Hunt, I see no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay. Great, then I will close the public comments and we will get into council discussion on this topic. Councilmember Ray? Yes.
But before we get into deliberation, I, so rather new to the, this committee, but, and I know the whiteboard has been around for a while and something that we have seen as a whole council. But what, what, what's the purpose of the whiteboard?
Sure. So, you know, the scope of Title 18 was set as A. And then as we undertook this journey of getting public comments and conversations going with Planning and Policy Commission, sometimes the scope tends to wear off and, but those are good conversations that are occurring. Other times, the timing of some of these things, like the energy code updates that just came through and how do they interplay, make us kind of figure out whether that these, these regulations are part of this. We don't want to lose those important ideas and conversations that occur on topics. So this became kind of a place to put things as conversations occurred or important things that probably meet the golden outcomes but are maybe outside the scope of the current update. But should be considered for the future update. That, that was sort of the purpose. It became a spot. The idea was, once we're done with all of this, that we would have Planning and Policy Commission deliberate on the whiteboard. We would come back to the committee and council so that you all could prioritize the whiteboard list item. These are things you want us to work on the next year or two. These are long-term things that should occur at this point and then provide budget and funding to address those items based on your priority.
That was kind of what I thought it was. And so there's nothing that's there other than their placeholders and their, their things to go back to and their good ideas that we didn't want to lose. And there's a lot of complexity here and we wanted to minimize getting bogged down in little rabbit holes. So we, we parked them and we're going to go back to them and, but there's no decisions been made about anything that's on the parking lot, whiteboard today.
Correct.
If, if I may add something as well, this is Andrea Snyder, deputy city administrator. The, the other guidance for what goes onto the whiteboard versus what maintains part of the scope was something we talked about with the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee, is the idea that we didn't want to, you know, this should be more of an, an update. And any major policy shifts that require a lot of public outreach or a lot of additional study, we would put on a whiteboard and go through that process that Minnie just described. So we're trying to stay, stay true to some of the, the guidance on that scope that the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee provided.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I think we have a number of very, relatively dissimilar things to talk about potentially. So I'm going to suggest that we start with any comments we have on the whiteboard and then on the ICAP table, both of which are not only relevant to this chapter but are actually just relevant to Title 18 writ large. And then, and then go into deliberations on the buildings and design. Does that sound good? All right, great. Okay, so I will start off on the whiteboard with, first of all, it is, it is good to see it and I just would, would very much appreciate it being somewhere where people can find it. It's come up in community dialogue a lot about the lack of visibility on this. So I think, yes, it is a work in progress, but having it accessible will, will help with those conversations. People will see that there, that items are noted and it has been recorded. And I think that would, would help with some of, some of the concerns that we've heard about this. The other thing is I think it would be helpful to have a preamble on there to the, you know, something similar to what you just said as far as the history, why, what this is, how it's used and, and that it's a work in progress, but also just describing exactly like what you said earlier that these are items that are important, but they, they were determined over the course of this Title 18 update to be, for any number of reasons, not executable within the timeframe of the Title 18 update, but which will be prioritized, will be looked at by Planning Policy and then prioritized and then acted upon. and then um, acted upon in a prioritized manner by council. So um, I think that preamble would be helpful. I think this is a, a list that is um, helpful to see. Like I said, there are some specific items on here, um, where I also think it would be helpful to give more information about what the plan for those items is, um, or if there's more information. So for example, the, the first one, which is stream buffers, um, I, I know that uh, I've had a conver, number of conversations about this item in particular. I believe that there will be um, more information coming up in this budget season about how we would um, pay for this work and things like that. So if there is more information about the options that have been considered for this and more information about why it's on the White Board, I think especially for those that we have had um, engagement on and where that information exists, it would be great to put that kind of information in the staff note. Um, and for some of them, for some of them, I feel that, that it is there. It's more just sort of for the ones that have more information, that could be helpful. And then I think, other than that, um, one other item that would be helpful would be uh, my feeling on how, uh, my feeling on um, council's role as far as this list is that if we have particular um, items on this list that we feel need to be addressed or are within the scope of the Title 18, then we would have that discussion in this committee with you. Um, and then potentially, you know, understand options for going forward in a different way if those options exist. Um, and then we would report back to the full council and then whatever that version would come back to full council for a vote. So that would, that would be my thought, um, but also just wanted to clarify that process um, on, on how things could come off the White Board or change White Board status. Uh, so those are, those are my thoughts again. Good to, good to see this. Um, would like to see it in a publicly accessible place and um, and yeah, then I have some specific comments on some items having to do with this chapter, but I'll save those for the chapter discussion. Council President Walsh?
Thank you, thank you. I will echo, I would love to see this added to the website underneath the Goals and Outcomes chart and have a little introduction that talks about scope. Let's see, on the, where are my comments for this? I'm not sure what it means in the staff notes column when it says that an item is identified. Does that mean it's included in the current drafts? Or does that mean that, so let me see if I can find an example of this. So under, I guess it's bucket three in the zone section, number nine, says, consider multifamily to be in allowed use in the urban villages, commercial retail zone. And the staff note says, identified in the zones and uses feedback loop table in response to commission feedback. So I get that it's been identified. Does that mean that it's being addressed or not? Or that it's in limbo? What, what does that mean?
Yeah, I, I think this, um, we'll clean up the language here. Uh, what this particular one that you're saying is, it's a staff note that where this came from. So in the feedback loop table, that's where we grabbed this information from. And it was actually in response to community comments and not commission feedback. So um, we'll, we'll go through this list. Um, but staff notes are really for staff purposes of, you know, this came from this particular place and that's why it's in here. Uh, that's, that's what we mean by identified.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think what I would like to see off of this is we've done a really great job of using the Goals and Outcomes chart as a way to kind of track the sense of, hey, this was our goal, here's our objective, possible outcomes or possible actions, outcomes, and whether or not we've done something with it. And so I, I would almost like to see the White Board, rather than it just being an issue, to see if we can redefine it, redefine it as a goal or an outcome and a possible action. And with that possible action, it would potentially be the staff's recommendation of whether this be something that goes to, you know, PPC meeting during the second draft that we think we can accomplish something in that, whether it's something that you're recommending really truly for post Title 18. And then I'd like to see our committee use that and kind of get a sense of, do we agree with where that is going and just be very specific on each of those items. Because this is great as documentation, but I want to make sure that it becomes actionable and usable. So that's what I hope to see in the next draft of that. And toward that idea, um, I had previously mentioned in the landscaping area, adding a point space system like Redmond. I don't remember whether we ended up deciding that was going to go into the draft code or whether that would go on to the White Board.
Yeah, we, you know, I tracked it as the potential to look at it for the second draft. Um, I've looked at the point base system that Redmond has and real quickly, there are some things that we're actually requiring. You know, tree preservation is already a requirement, landscaping we already have. So, so you don't get credit for that. So we may, you know, we'll, we'll, we're studying it to see what part of it makes sense uh, to incorporate with this current Title 18 update. We also don't want to create more process with the same intended outcome. So I think we're studying it and we'll report back with a second draft what we, you know, we did. But we also thinking we will have that conversation with PPC when we take the ICAP table with them about incentives-based approach that Shoreline has, right, and ecology score that Redmond has. Um, and uh, where we are and what the state Energy Code requirements are and what some of our options are to incorporate in this uh, update and which ones need to be um, thoughtfully discussed later.
Okay. I love that idea. I love, love, always love looking at other cities and what they've done and using that as an example that PPC can look at and say, do we want to go with this approach? Do we want to go with this approach? What are the pros and cons? So I think that's fantastic, but trying to step back into this idea of the White Board future actions list, whatever we want to call it. It sounds like then there are some things that have been proposed as possibilities for the second draft that staff might end up looking at and going, not sure if that's going to make it in. So how are we tracking those items?
Yeah, so, so things that, you know, we, we, for each of the bucket that we finish, after the council uh, committee discussion, we create a list, a consolidated list. I think we shared one with you. Uh, we'll include the rest of the consolidated lists with uh, your next packet. But those, those are our capture, here are things we're going to do and not do. Um, I think in this packet, we probably should have given you the consolidated list for our second bucket. But we'll include the second and the third bucket with your fourth round so you can tell us if, if we captured everything in there or not. We're not making a call, you know, if it goes on that second draft list and we're going to have that discussion with PPC and if it, if it comes out that the ecological score that Redmond has or this incentive-based approach that this has and where the Energy Code is, that this needs to go on the White Board, then it will put it on the White Board and we'll communicate with you all. If it means we can incorporate it with this code update, we'll obviously try and attempt to do that. Uh, but we also don't want to create a half-baked thing on ecological, you know, sustainable buildings. So we want to have, be thoughtful over some of those things. So there'll be some judgment call. We'll make those calls and we'll document them and we'll bring it back for the committee and for PPC in an open, transparent way.
Let me continue on this realm. There were many things that came up during this whole process where we said, that doesn't really belong in Title 18, but it's still something that, that came up from this. And the obvious example is the building code. And so I, I'm wondering whether there is a way to document that as an idea on the White Board? Because the way that you've organized the White Board right now is based on the buckets that you've defined for Title 18.
Sure.
But there were some other items there that we really wanted to make sure to follow up on.
Yeah, well, we can add at the bottom, you know, non-code related, which were more programmatic, you know, programs like urban forestry program. And there were other things that came through this conversation. So non-code related items can be added at the end. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I will stop there for now. Or I think to capture your intent, it was non-Title 18 code, right? It could be building, it could be a different section of code.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ray?
Uh, thanks. So that was fascinating. I, I, I appreciate that. Um, so I was thinking that the White Board was kind of a classic parking lot where ideas that come up, we park them so we don't lose track of them. In listening to that discussion, I'm thinking it's actually different than that. I think what the White Board has become is a backlog of work that needs to be um, scheduled. And so this isn't um, classic parking lot is, um, what are we going to do about this? What are we going to do about that? But very real time. I think this is, we're actually building a backlog of work that we need to um, in a very structured and programmatic way, say, we're going to address this in this thing and we're going to address this in this thing and we're going to push this out for four years because we don't know what the heck to do with it. And this is addressed in building code. So I think it needs a little more um, intentionality for everything that's coming up here on the list about what, how, how are we going to dispose of this item? And it may, and uh, it's pretty, it's completely legitimate to say the disposition is um, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to study it or we're going to push it out. We don't know what to do with it. That's legit. But everything else, I mean, we should be figuring out where we're, where we're going to do this and, and, and then we can come back and say, okay, we like that idea and we can move forward with that. So Andrea, you look like you're really thinking.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember, I was listening very intently.
Okay. So it looked like thinking. So anyway, that was just, you know, my, my thought in listening to the conversation is maybe we've got a tool that started out truly as a parking lot on a White Board, but it's evolved into, this is our backlog of work that we can't deal with in our current, using the kind of technical phrase, this is a, you know, we got a release of Title 18 going out and we can't get the, these features and functions into this release of Title 18. That doesn't mean we're not going to do them. We're just, um, we're not, and we're not going to lose track of them. So just a different way to think about it.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, building on that, I, one other um, comment on this and on the framing is, there have been instances where this has been referred to as a list of things that have been delayed. And um, I also wanted to clarify that uh, a lot of these have come up during the process of Title 18 and been put here, but they, they weren't in the original scope and then have been delayed past the original scope, for example. So there's a mix of where these things came from, but um, a number of them did come up during the process. And so this isn't a list of things were, uh, that were on a timeline that we're now delaying. Um, it's more nuanced than that. And then I have one more comment question. So on the, um, on the White Board, there's a mention under affordable housing of the work that's on the, with the HAPI grant. And I wondered if you could speak to the extent of what's covered in that grant? Because my understanding of it was that that was missing middle, but not um, specifically affordable. And the reason for the question is we've lately had a lot of conversation about differentiating those and making sure that we address both, but that it may not be like all the same tools to address both and we may need to have conversations about both. So that was, that was part of my question.
Yeah. So the, the part about inclusionary zoning, uh, whether that should be um, expanding to three or four other zones than where it currently applies is part of the um, part of the, the grant. Let me find the scope here real quick. So the strategy number six, seven, and eight of our uh, adopted Housing Action Plan or Housing, whatever we call it, um, the Housing Strategies, uh, six, seven, and eight. Number six is increase the developer-provided affordable housing in Central Issaquah. So uh, part of that, we're going to look at uh, increasing the inclusionary zoning in Central Issaquah to three or four other zones than it currently is applicable to, evaluate how many units this could create and would there be unintended consequences? So we're looking at really from an economic standpoint, that issue. That's what I think this White Board thing is referring to. And then also potentially looking at inclusionary zoning outside of Central Issaquah. So that's, that's strategy six, saying increase developer-provided affordable housing in Central Issaquah. I think that's, that's this topic.
Okay. That's interesting. So I had thought that we also, is it a separate grant then that is covering the missing middle housing?
No, so there are three strategies in there. So the second uh, one was the um, mitigate offset deterrence to condominium construction. So really understanding uh, and researching how the state and other states, Colorado, for example, has local provisions of impacting condominium development. So we're getting mostly apartments. So that's, it, you know, goes with the uh, housing diversity issue. And strategy eight, which is talking about uh, increasing potential diversity of housing types built in the city, um, is looking at uh, housing diversity aspects of it. So that's strategy eight.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that context. So one, one more comment I have on this is that um, in the, in the White Board, it has this item with affordability and then it has that um, HAPI grant addressing that in the notes. And uh, I do recall that council, at the beginning of this process, had on, early in the process, decided that affordable housing um, would be something that needed the bigger policy discussion and that we would, that that would not be completely contained within Title 18. So I do remember deliberately that council, I believe, was the one who um, at least initially set that on a separate path because it needed more of that conversation and research. However, we also do have a goal in the goals that was included, uh, which and, and still is there about the diversity of housing. So um, what leads me to my comment is that in the um, it's, there's affordable housing with diversity mentioned in the White Board and then in the ICAP, um, it says adopt codes to prioritizing missing middle in the ICAP table. And then it says, changes to housing diversity are not part of this phase of the Title 18 update, but it is part of the Housing Action Plan implementation with the HAPI grant. So I did want to flag this because that's not my understanding. My understanding is we are still attempting to look at this through the goals list, which includes that goal on diversity of housing. So that it's not completely um, addressed, it's okay because we will have this grant and I understand wanting to maximize the use of this grant and, and that that's part of this work. But I, I still think that it's incorrect to say, and I disagree, well, I guess I'll say, I disagree that changes to housing diversity are not part of this phase of the Title 18 update because we specifically do have that goal still in our Goals and Outcomes table. So um, I guess I wanted to confirm with my fellow councilmembers if you think that's the case, seeing some head nods and then to, if, if there's a reaction. So that would also be great.
No, I think um, with the subdivision design section, um, the committee asked us to go back and, and put that lens in for subdivision design. So we are working on that um, with the PPC of, of, you know, primarily for uh, the, the grid, uh, the street connectivity issue and, and the zero lot line were the two topics identified in the, in the subdivision design. So we, we do have that filter in there. Uh, this housing, you know, the, the housing strategies that the city has adopted, the nine strategies, kind of is a good foundation for, for some of that. And, and I think this grant is going to give us some good information to make meaningful con, you know, changes that need to occur to create those, um, you know, whether it's cottage housing or, you know, single room occupancy or, or other things or condominiums. So the whole gamut of housing diversity conversations primarily will, will, this, this work that will occur under the grant will provide a foundation to have those meaningful, thoughtful conversations. Now, the Title 18 includes a lot of stuff, a lot of other chapters. So uh, it'll be helpful to, to us if you can help us understand, you know, building, building, which, which of the buckets you feel like we need to provide more attention to the housing diversity with this current Title 18 update?
Well, on that question, we, I was trying to pull it up, but I don't have it in front of me. In the, in the Goals and Outcomes chart, it does identify the parts of the chapters in the earlier one. And so, I wouldn't, I'm not asking for scope creep, but I am asking that it not be, as it said in the, in the ICAP table, changes to housing diversity are not part of this phase of Title 18 update. Because that is one of our goals, is to increase housing diversity. And that's still one of our goals. And I still want this evaluated through that lens, especially in those chapters that are singled out, so.
Sounds good. Yep, we'll, we'll make that change.
Council President Walsh?
Thank you. To build upon that idea, goal number two is provide adequate parking while utilizing land efficiently. And I understand that parking is coming up as our next section. But looking at the whiteboard backlog, you've already added things onto the parking section that are considered backlog. And number 28 says, update off-street parking requirements table and review minimums versus maximums, saying that it needs study and facilitate community discussion, determine best approach draft changes are temporary until final approach is finalized. And I get that, and I get that it's big. But this was one of the goals that we adopted, was to use land efficiently. Says provide adequate parking while utilizing land efficiently. And so, I'm wondering how the administration can justify putting that on the whiteboard, considering this is one of the major goals that we thought needed to come out of a Title 18 process?
Yeah, you know, I don't know if Stevens on the line. I'm not seeing him here. He's been working on the parking chapter and has had multiple affinity group meetings with Vision Partners, with others. And some of this feedback of what can be done now or not has evolved through those conversations. But like you said, this is something we're going to discuss with Planning and Policy Commission coming up. So, again, this whiteboard list is going to evolve based on what PPC says we need to do or not do with this current update.
So, toward that idea, I would really appreciate it in that conversation with PPC to give them some options that allow them to indicate at a better rate of, no, this is really important that we take this on, or we're, we feel like we can really accomplish it for areas A, B, or C, or no, it needs a really robust community conversation, and we should leave it out and stick with our current parking requirements. Because, and asking them how, how that satisfies the goal and outcome that we had adopted. Because I think this is, this is one we've been hearing from the community about. It's one that has a major impact on climate action and our ability to get things done, and our ability to make sure that 50 to 75% of our land use isn't parking lots. And so, yeah.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think you'll see in the parking chapter, there's a map that talks about Tier One and Tier Two. So, if you have transit and you're close to that, you have a different standard. So, we'll walk through all of that with you all and with PPC.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, I think, I think from, from this committee also hearing that there's a higher bar for putting goals onto the whiteboard. So, it's one thing, like, goals that are in the Goals and Outcome Chart onto the whiteboard. Because, you know, there are things that will come up during conversations and issues to address, and, and that's all understood. But the whiteboard, or the, the Goals and Outcomes is one of the guiding documents that is defining the scope. So, so in that case, you know, I, I earlier said this isn't a delay list. But in that case, it, it was planned to be as part of this update. And so, in that case, I think it has a higher bar and, and, you know, will come to council's attention. I think probably does, should be weighed in on by council and this committee.
Yeah, no, definitely. I think your idea about taking the whiteboard and linking it to the goals outcomes will, will provide that prioritization anyways for us too, but also when we come back. So, we'll, we'll do that exercise.
Okay, great. Council President Walsh?
I think the other one that just needs to be said and put out there on the backlog sheet is single-family zoning, single-family housing. And whether we're going to have a conversation about whether that is the most appropriate for all of our areas or not. I will note that Redmond, I believe, has recently eliminated single-family zoning. And so, we're seeing a lot more of the, this conversation happening regionally. And so, I think we at least need to have the conversation. But it is not one that I would say is on the Goals and Outcomes chart, that it probably squarely lands in the, I keep wanting to call it the delay sheet, now that you've mentioned that word, the whiteboard backlog. There we go.
Yeah, we need to come up with a better name.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Do you see that as different than the missing middle conversation, which is on the whiteboard on their, their diversity housing conversation? To me, I, I would think of that as a noteworthy element of that conversation, but part of that.
No, I, I do think that is a good point. And perhaps what I would say is, if the administration can come back with a plan for addressing missing middle that has elements without looking at the single-family zoning, then I'm open to that as a concept. But I would agree that it's hard to get missing middle if everything is zoned as either single-family or multifamily high. And so, yeah, no, I, I, I think that is a good point of the conversation that needs to be had.
All right, great discussion. Are we, are we done with the whiteboard part of this discussion? Okay, so we will now move on to our other informational, not completely related to this part of Title 18 information that was provided with the packet, which is the Issaquah Climate Action Plan Actions. And I will start off with saying, this is something that community members have been asking for, and so I appreciate seeing it. And I will appreciate having it be accessible for people on the website. I think that would be great and provides more transparency into the process. And I think it also hopefully helps those who are interested in following this process really see where we are doing things. And if we aren't doing things in this update, there are places as well where it says, for example, like in the incentivize low-impact development projects, and it says that it's being addressed in a different chapter. So, I think that these are, this is a hopefully very helpful document, especially for those who are following along this process and for those community members who are specifically concerned about climate and climate action. And hopefully, this provides more information for, for them. So, and I, I found it very helpful as well. If you have any other comments on, on this informational item, councilmember Ray?
I agree with what you just said, but, and I don't know if this is even relevant or possible, but I would love to see the new state building codes kind of layered in here too. Because we're, we're going to be bound by them, and so they're not Title 18 per se. But I think there's a lot of good coming out of those building code changes that'll address some of the Climate Action Plan. And I think highlighting them to give people visibility to other things that we're going to be doing because of state law would be very helpful also.
Councilmember Walsh?
I should actually turn that on. Yeah, I guess my comments regarding the ICAP was, first of all, appreciating seeing it. I know this was extra work that we asked you to do that wasn't necessarily in the schedule, but was necessary to be responsive to the community. But I, too, want to better understand the concepts of building performance and energy efficiency versus building design. Because while we're saying, hey, here are the ICAP things that are addressed in Title 18, there's just this huge underlying area of stuff that is Title 16-related and the state building code. And so, being able to, at the very least, just address that in a small paragraph and say, here's what's coming, I think would be very useful. And I think that was everything I had. I was trying to go through the implementation matrix for the Climate Action Plan, not just the, yeah, not just the objectives and actions that you had pulled out there. Because there was the transportation and land use area. And so, I just wanted to make sure that all of those really came out. Because some of those were things like TL 1.1 was incentivize dense mixed-use and transit-oriented developments. And so, it says implement through Title 18 update. Action requires the city to develop more elaborate parking policy, including differentiating three areas. So, I feel like the transportation and land use area, at least the ones that are related from the implementation matrix, probably need to come out onto that.
Yeah, so I, I think, so on this, this table that we created, TL 1.1 is on there. And then we, instead of having the 65, however many there were, we took the ones that had Title 18 associated with it. So, it's your table where the intention was that this would be implemented, this strategy would be implemented by Title 18. So, those, so this is what this is referring to. So, it doesn't include all of them, but it's a synthesis of which ones had an associated Title 18 action.
Okay, got it. I, I had seen the blue portion being the focus area and the strategies and hadn't really connected that you were combining the two. So, thank you.
Your comments? Okay, I'll just, I mentioned it already, but I think that sentence about the housing diversity needs to be revised. I already mentioned my rationale for that. So, I think then we can move on to our housing, not housing, building design part, the main topic. And we also, within this part of the discussion, have, I think, at least two sections. One is that list of the 17 commentary is, some of which I think are probably policy-related. And so, should be brought back to this committee. And then we have the, the things that were presented in this version that we have, that we should discuss. So, I, my thought is to go 17 list first, and then go to the general comments. Okay. So, if we could pull up that list, I think that'd be helpful.
So, the first one was the step back. And I think the PPC was unanimous in making their recommendation to council to, to allow that flexibility to have it lower, but no, no more than six feet. This topic was talking about what happens with the step back area, whether it's all terrace usable open space, or is it just from the outside you see the building? So, the unit facing it can open into, and this becomes a terrace space that's usable or not? I think that's where some of these comments related to it.
So, I'm going to take a step back. This list, these are all things that are going to be worked on by staff, right? For the next version?
Correct.
Okay. I guess my question is, based on that, and based on, I do think some of these are topics for discussion, or at least should be, I think, reviewed by this committee within our purview. I guess I'm wondering, can, can all of these items come back in a, in a second draft? And, and not to get too much into my general comments on this, but I, I felt while reading this, like there was a lot of stuff that wasn't fully in this version that is still in the works. So, that maybe would streamline things if, if you could, if that's an option. And then if not, then we can go through all of these. And do we think that sounds reasonable to, to have all of these come back in the next, okay? Would that be possible?
Sure, the timing of, you know, we'll be working on this along with the other six buckets. Our plan was to, when we release the, the second draft, when we fix all of these, we will lay out what we did with it, and if there were different options that we evaluated, and which one we incorporated in the draft. So, there'll be a memo with this, all the building design bucket to say how we addressed it and what options we considered for the Planning and Policy Commission to, to know what, what happened with that. We can bring that to committee after Planning Policy Commission? Or would you, would you want to see with, with their final recommendations? So, it'll get folded in? Or do you want a mid-step of checking what we're doing with this?
Councilmember Ray?
I, I would actually like to have a midpoint checkpoint on this to see where you're going, what the options look like before, before we take it forward. And quite honestly, I wouldn't mind if we were to do that also, I mean, not to rewind the whiteboard. But I, I think that we need to have a richer whiteboard discussion too. So, I mean, not that I want us to have another special meeting, but there's, there may be, we're maybe at a point where we want to do this more often than once a month. Just my thoughts.
Do you, do you have a preference for before or after PPC that this would come back?
I don't have a strong preference either way. I think just the point is, it may be if there are a few items that need to be called out. I think otherwise, a fair number of these, from my perspective, seem like things that have been mentioned in other things as far as second draft. And so, I'm not sure whether I would necessarily treat this differently.
Okay, does it, as far as timing, any considerations as far as this impacting overall timeline if we were to have this come back for a second touch before Planning Policy?
Not, not necessarily. I mean, if, if, if we need to come and check in with you with this list and say what we did with the list, instead of giving you the whole draft again, to get your feedback on it before we make the edits to the draft, that's fine. If we bring, if we make the changes to the draft, bring it back, and then we have to go back and change it, that, that will add more, more time.
Okay, well, given that, let's go with the more efficient option. Because I do think, you know, things like the, the pedestrian block connections and the, the weatherization, those are things that have come up a lot, and it seems like that there is a sort of policy decision there. Because yes, like as you pointed out, if you have the weatherization along an alley, that could make for a more pedestrian oriented. So, I think there are some policy discussions. If you go to the next one, I think there were a few other ones in there as well. Oh, yeah, density bonus jumped out at me. Yes, we can go to arch, but I also understood that there were, there are only a couple buildings so far that have used that. So, are there ways to, you know, we want this to be used presumably, so are there ways to improve that? So, I think that's a policy discussion. So, yeah, I think of those two options that you gave, I think I'd go with the one that's most efficient. The other one that jumped out, my, this mic is also going in and out, I think. But the other one is, of course, the last one, address climate action goals. You know, I think that was, in my email to you, I also asked about that. And it seems like that one needs, just needs more work and more. needs more work and more explanation. And that's a policy stance, I think, that I'm taking on that, but without really much information. So, yeah, so I think if we can have these come back to us before you do the draft drafting, but as just a second touch, because there's so many things left to be done, that'd be great.
Sure. So we'll schedule the time when we will have a complete response to you, but it'll be, and then number 17, we're trying to schedule that conversation with PPC and share the ICAP table with them, in which case we'll lay out some options for them to consider. So we'll sync up the timing between PPC and you all, but we'll bring a response back and some policy options for some of these to the committee.
Okay, great. Does that sound like a good approach, this whole list, and we don't have to go through them, number one? Okay, okay, great, excellent. So now we will get into the general comments on the, the chapter drafts and the things that were singled out. Council President Walsh, do you like to start us off?
Sure. Okay. These go willy-nilly through all kinds of stuff, but we'll get there eventually. I think the, the comment about this code being adopted, and then there being a delay before the energy code update to the building code in July, is really important. I think we do need a stopgap measure in there. You know, we've seen other code expirations that have been replaced with replacement code that have caused us major problems. And I would just rather not, I would rather have something in there, even if that is, hey, you need to be lead silver if you're over a certain standpoint. I think that's really important. With the multifamily medium, having that in Old Town and in the full city, and having a different overlay and requirement there is very confusing to me. So I would ask that we come up with a way to handle that, that doesn't use the same name, or somehow otherwise differentiates it. The through-block approach is really important, and I just want to make sure we emphasize that, I'm not sure there should be many deviations on that one. If there's a way that we can make sure that we are prioritizing the pedestrian, especially in Central Issaquah, I think that's important. In the overlays section, I think what I was hit with was a lack of pictures and maps, and especially for those neighborhoods within the neighborhoods. I need something that tells me, because I've lived in the Highlands for 12 years, and I couldn't tell you where some of those neighborhood overlays were. For weather protection, I was walking around Kirkland Downtown the other day when it was raining, and I just very much appreciated the consistency of their awnings, and the fact that they go out to pretty much 100% of their front of the space. And so I was looking for that when I was reading through this code. And unfortunately, I think there's two areas where weather protection is included. So 18.606.070 covers all multifamily and commercial buildings, and it says they need to be at 75% of the width. But then in the commercial business district overlay area in 18.700.030, it only gives depth and vertical clearance and not width. And I think if there was any place that I would want to say has to be more than 75% or something, that would be where. I think there's a huge economic benefit to making sure that that is addressed as much as possible. And so I would just ask that we look at that, make sure we maximize the weather protection as much as possible, and that there aren't areas where that conflicts. And then finally, building step backs, I also was a little bit conflicted with the idea of it being up to the sixth floor. I remember the earlier conversation about adopting that related to the TOD project and wanting to have flexibility. I just don't, don't quite remember it going that high. But I'm probably remembering it incorrectly. But yeah, I think we might need to really think about that step back, and whether or not that truly is the best approach for us. That's my comments areas.
Councilmember Ray?
I'm going to be really brief, because I've already kind of talked about it, and it's exactly what Council President Walsh just talked about, which is the step backs. I'd like to make sure that we understand what we're really signing up for, and what it's going to look like, you know, what the potential is. So I'd like us to think that one through a little bit more. Other than that, I don't think I have much else to add.
Okay. Great. So I, on the step backs, I think maybe some pictures would be helpful. If I, if I understand it correctly, I'm in support of the changes. And I also think it's important that we have this TOD project that specifically called this out as a sort of necessary change for that project, and we want more of that kind of development. So I, I think I'm supportive, but I also, without pictures and based on the comments of my fellow councilmembers, I'm not totally sure I understand the implication. So pictures would be great. And then I, too, have a sort of list of miscellaneous things. I support the exemption of the treasures list from the architectural standards. I think one of the reasons we have those standards is to preserve the sort of charm and the character, and the treasures are, by definition, these important pieces of our city's charm. And so exempting them from having to make changes to comply with something else makes total sense. And in support, and also just really appreciate that that has been come up, that has been developed as a strategy for preserving our very special list of treasures. Then on the, on the goals, at a higher level here, we have these three goals for this chapter, and they were around preserving the neighborhood character, and then the sustainability and climate action goal, and the streamlining the process goal. So when I was looking through this, I think a lot of the changes in this draft are around the streamlining the process, which really, hard to argue that that's important, but also not something that there's a lot of policy discussion around, in my opinion. So that, I think, yes, did a lot of that achieve that goal. I saw a lot of preserving of neighborhood character largely because the codes are unchanged from the way they were, and so they're just sort of consolidation. So I think that goal was largely achieved. The one that I was underwhelmed with, to be honest, is, was around the community sustainable development and climate goals. I think a stopgap measure on some of these building standards would help. But really, I think, just looking through this more with that lens and thinking about how we could do things to better meet those sustainability and climate goals, I think that's the goal that, for me, really stood out as needing work here. Also in that goals and outcomes chart really didn't, that sort of also led me to that same conclusion, that that's the goal that this needs to be strengthened, needs to be strengthened for this chapter. I support the comments on the weather protection. That's something that's come up a lot. We have very rainy weather, and, you know, to make the sidewalks safe and accessible, I think there's considerations there. So would, would like to make sure that we are addressing that. And I understand that it doesn't make sense to put weatherization somewhere where no one goes, but really making sure that where people might want to walk, that we have that would be great. The view corridor was, was, I think, singled out as something that we need to work more on that code, which I, I can see is, needs to be very clear for it to be effective. But I think that that's potentially a policy-related discussion, because we, we have wanted to have this impact where we are not negatively impacting the views, because they're very important to the natural beauty of our area. And, and so I think that that was a deliberate sort of overarching policy decision. And so I think for, for council, it would be important to fully understand how that can be better implemented. Because I do think the goal there is important, but I also understand that the, having it implemented in code is currently problematic. One other overarching thing is, and I asked some questions to this, is I think generally, anything that's making the architectural standards or colors or things like that more prescriptive, I would not support. I didn't hear, I heard that we aren't doing that, so that's great. But just going forward, I've heard from a lot of people about how overly prescriptive it is, and, you know, to the extent that we, to the extent that I believe it also matches this sort of, this goal about modernizing and streamlining the code, I think we should strive to make it not more prescriptive. And if there are areas where we can make it less prescriptive, I would be at least interested in understanding those. And the last thing is, I think developer obligations is important. I understand that's also to come, but interested in that and believe that that is also a policy-based discussion about what developer obligations we're gonna enforce through the code. So yeah, those are my comments. Again, the big one is that I think my takeaway was, you know, we had these goals listed, and one of them is on community sustainable development and climate goals, and that one really didn't sing, so. All right, do we have any other comments on this one? Do you have, do you have any other questions for us, or anything that we didn't address that would be helpful for us to address?
Yeah, no, I think, I think I understand the discussion. So the next steps, we'll bring back this list of 17 for the committee before we fold it into the draft code language to get your take on some of these things. We'll make those edits to the whiteboard items, tie them to the goals and outcomes chart, and put it on the website. Same thing with the, and then add other non-Title 18 items to the whiteboard that were more programs and other things that were related. We will try and, for the ICAP table, we'll try and add the building code and the state law requirements that are in there, Title 18. And then as far as the, the topic, you know, the housing diversity section of the line, we'll look at, we'll revise that. We'll also have some policy options for the items on the 17 list for you all to weigh in on, to the extent that we can bring that forward. I think, I think I know where to go with this. So thank you for your input.
I have one more that I
Yep.
Didn't read. So on the whiteboard, it has evaluate eco-friendly roof materials, metals, and more eco-friendly alternative and less expensive. And that, to me, jumped out as something that could be done to address the sustainability in this draft. So I would like, unless there's opposition based on something I'm not understanding, I would like to pull that into the current draft off of the whiteboard, because I think it's, clearly goes towards that goal, which, as I said earlier, the goal, I think it's nine about climate and sustainability seems underrepresented in this work. And I also have experience with, with this, and with regulations not allowing metal roof, and they're more eco-friendly. So that'd be a great one to work on.
Yeah, it's really interesting. We've had internal debates about that. I think the development agreements had that requirement where the galvanized metal couldn't be used, and it was more related to the critical or aquifer recharge areas. But the jury's still out whether that actually has an impact on, on water or not. So we'll take a look at it. But the, yeah, the metal is more, you know, recyclable than, than wood and other things that are more, not, less green. But then there's the issue of galvanized metal and what it does to the water that seeps in into the aquifer. So we'll review it and add it in with this update, if it makes sense.
Okay, that would be great. I happen to know that there are some restrictions based, not on the galvanized issue, but on reflectiveness, and it's not actually, they currently are matching or better than, there are options that are matching or better than.
Yeah, and for wildfire purposes, you know, there's that aspect, and you, it's more
Yeah, there's a bunch of
Less combustible, yeah.
I think there's a bunch of good reasons to consider it, and I think it should be done in this go-around. Okay. Anyone, any other comments from the committee on anything else we missed? Okay. Okay, and yes, I think that was a great summary of, of what we have said and where you're going to go with it. So that was great.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was the only item on our agenda. And so I will call for announcements, if there's any announcements on any topics, my fellow councilmembers, and I'm not seeing any. So with that, then, we are adjourned at 8:06 PM.